We got you.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Manelis?
Present.
Commissioner Walter?
Here.
Commissioner Paulson? Commissioner Paulson?
Someone just joined at nine, four, six, two.
Commissioner Paulson?
Nine, four, six, two. Can I sign a name? Is this Lori or Annie or?
This, this is Lori if you've unmuted me.
Yep, I muted you. I'm gonna put you.
Commissioner Reynolds? Commissioner Petrie?
Here.
Alright, that is roll call.
Alright.
Actually Lori Petrie, you have the floor.
Okay, so I'm called, we've already had our roll call. Next order of business on our agenda this morning is the approval of minutes for the May twentieth and June tenth meetings for the planning commission. Do we want to do these individually Mike, or can we vote on them as a block?
Vote on them as a, as a whole. Just make sure in the, in the motion you do each date.
Okay, alright, I'll go ahead and do the motion here rather than asking for you guys to come up with one. So I move that the planning commission approve the minutes of May twentieth, twenty twenty, and of June tenth, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Second that.
And who is that?
That was Commissioner.
Carol Bellows.
Okay, great, thank you. So we have a, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the May twentieth and June tenth meetings. All those in favor, or do you want to do a roll call here?
Roll call please.
Okay, alright, roll call.
Commissioner Bellows?
Yes.
Commissioner Manelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Not present.
Commissioner Reynolds? Not present. Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'll put up on the screen here is the agenda here in just a moment.
Ronnie, are you missing Kate Moore?
No, she's here.
That's right, I forgot about Kate. Okay, I apologize.
It's okay Ronnie, I, I'm here and you're forgiven.
I forgot we voted you in last time.
I mean, it was really exciting, so.
Commissioner Kate, you are present and roll call for your.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, so moving on on the agenda, so we are here to discuss and consider case number LU twenty twenty dash oh one, King City Community Development Code concerning accessory dwelling and some a little bit of a housekeeping amendments as well. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Keith.
Okay, you folks have a staff report that I submitted to you. It was fairly lengthy, you got a memo and then some attachments and so forth. So we've talked about accessory dwelling units in the past. And we finally do have an amendment package for you folks to consider. And before I get into that, we also had some housekeeping things that we wanted to take care of as well. Some of them are pretty minor, they're kind of related to the accessory dwelling unit question. You'll see in the amendments I got into just accessory structures as well and was mostly just to have some consistency between our expectations for different types of accessory structures, whether they're just for storing material or whether they're for residents. And then one other one that we had discussed earlier was to change, at least for now, the sign code so that we don't require a planning commissioner review for any sign application. So the change there is to, to have it set up so that the planning commission would review any variances to the sign code and your requests for that, but just normal, you meet the standards type of a sign permit request, it would just go through the city manager as an administrative review, similar to building permit process. So with that overview, why don't I just walk through the memo quickly that I, that I have and then I could, I think maybe I'll just take questions instead of marching through all the amendments that are shown in the code language itself and you folks can just ask me specific things that you have questions about. So I have an introduction and as you know, oh, also when you're looking at, when you're looking at me, I'm looking at my other computer. Oh, you've got this. I'm looking at my computer screen over here so I can see what I'm doing, so I'm gonna be looking sideways, but don't think I'm doing anything weird. So I talk about the state guidance and in fact, I, I attached a guidebook that the state gave us. I talk a little bit about our existing ADU regulations and one of the things that came up as a particular barrier for having an ADU was our seventy-five hundred square foot minimum lot size. So that's one of the things that we took, we took care of. The other is, is that the state law says that we cannot require an onsite parking space for an ADU. So I had originally had the amendment, we thought we could require it if there was no on-street parking available. However, that's not the case, we just simply cannot require an onsite parking space for an ADU. So I did change the language to reflect what the state law requires there. And then I go into the ADU and housekeeping amendments, I gave you an overview already. One of the things that, of course.
Excuse me Keith?
Yes. Yes?
Carol, you're on mute.
Can you tell me where you're organizing from, please? What page?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm starting now on page two of my memo. So I am this is under potential ADU and housekeeping amendments, starting on the bottom of page two. And so with a bullet list, I just outlined the different amendments. Most of them are related to ADUs one way or another. And as you'll see that you, we have a, a chapter for accessory dwelling units. But also we have to deal with where accessory dwelling units show up in other places of the code, particularly the zoning districts, parking standards and so forth. So one of the things that we did, so the, the new neighborhood mixed use zone did not allow for accessory dwelling units, so I put that in there. That's a relatively new one. Also, in running by the amendments by the building official, he told me that the current code reference to uniform building code is incorrect and that it's called the Oregon Building Code. So we'll be needing to make that language change throughout the CDC later. But at least I've made those changes where we're in sections that we're dealing with now. Let's see, other highlights here. One thing that's important is ADUs also cannot be included in any density calculation, so they're allowed as a dwelling unit, but you do not count them when you're talking about how many units are allowed in a certain zone with the maximum density is. So those do not get counted when you're talking about what the density requirements are. And then looking at the ADU chapter itself, we took out, in addition to the parking requirement and the minimum lot size, we also took out some other procedural and design-related requirements that the state definitely frowns on. Because they can also tend to make those kinds of units more expensive. So the, one of the things that they're really looking to do is to make ADUs and other types of dwellings more affordable. So parking is one thing that of course can, can boost the price of a house along with having to meet certain design requirements. So really what we've done is made it so that asking for an accessory dwelling unit is no more difficult than asking for a building permit to put up a single-family house. We really had some requirements that made it a little more difficult. Let's see, what else to say here? I think that's about it. And then the other one that we had talked about earlier, this is a housekeeping one, was the change to the sign code so that the planning commission would only review signed permits that require variance. So for, yes?
Keith, did you want me to put up the email that you sent out from the housing unit?
Yes, please, that'd be great. Put that up next. So we, we got some comment from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And they were primarily concerned, they, once, once we got clear on what we were proposing in our ordinance, they were satisfied with that and then they suggested that I provide some somewhat more elaborate findings that, that refer back to our housing needs analysis.
Can you all see that?
So, so I wrote a email to Ronnie indicating, so when we go, let's see, so we're, so the findings start on page page three, page four. And then at the bottom of page four, we have for housing goal ten, to provide for housing needs of citizens of the state. The wording that Ronnie has on the screen would be the replacement wording for the findings that I had there. And primarily I referred to our housing needs analysis that was done back in twenty eighteen. And indicated some of the findings, main findings of that study. One was that we, at least based on the market and population growth for this area, they're anticipating that we would have a need for nine hundred and forty new units between twenty eighteen and twenty thirty-eight. And also they're finding that there's a fair chunk of households, both owners and renters, that are really having some trouble meeting their house payments, either rents or house payments as, as a part of their total income. So I added those additional findings, the Fair, the Fair Housing Council of Oregon liked those quite well, so I think we're, we're good there. So I think I'll wrap up there and just see if you folks have any particular questions about any aspect of the amendments.
Um, this is Carol Bellows. I would like to go through the amendments one by one. Because there are amendments there that I don't think are in your summary.
Okay, great, so.
With the, yeah, the amendments to the code that are written in and notated and all that wonderful stuff.
Okay. So I'll just go through those. I can go through those quickly if you'd like. So on your PDF, this would be starting on page thirteen, if you have one. There you go, yeah. Okay, so the first one, under definitions, this is referring to accessory building or structure, and I just wanted to clarify that when we're referring to accessory building or structure in the code, we're not referring to a dwelling, we're referring to a building that's used for other purposes. A storage shed, a garage, something, but it's not a dwelling unit. I think I'll just go ahead and keep explaining things and then feel free to just chime in and stop me if you have a question about anything I'm showing you. So then on the next page, this is to clarify what a, an accessory dwelling unit is. That it's a second and independent living unit created on a lot with a primary unit. And that it's, can be attached or detached and that is auxiliary to and always smaller than the primary dwelling. This is language that actually I found in the, similar to what is found in the Portland zoning code. Thought that was a, I've looked at a number of different examples that seem to be a good one to use, just to clarify what it is. Cause the one thing that we wanted to avoid, at least for now, is having a confusion. If you create an accessory dwelling, does that then become a duplex? And then we have different, you know, setback requirements and other things, at least currently for duplexes. Those might get changed in the future, but at least for now, those would be different. So that was primarily to deal with that potential confusion.
Keith?
Yes.
Um, this is Kate Moore, hi. If the unit doesn't include, does it have to include a bathroom, or does it have to? Like if someone adds on to their house and they don't put an additional bathroom in, is that considered an ADU, or?
Technically no, because it wouldn't be considered an independent living unit.
Okay, so um I don't know if we need to is that included in living facilities?
You know, it's I think you, you just think of it as another part to the single-family dwelling.
Okay, do we need to specifically call out like bathroom or plumbing or anything like that? Or is that covered under the living, living facility umbrella?
Well, it does say here that it has, oh, so if it doesn't have those different things, what is it?
Yeah.
You're asking?
Good catch.
Yeah. At least to me, and we could figure out maybe how we could clarify that a little bit, but to me, I would just say that if it does, if it's not independent, then it's not an, an ADU or another dwelling unit. It's simply a different way of having living space in the house that maybe is detached.
I wonder if on this section that you're looking at right now, if we should maybe add something like plumbing or something like bathroom.
Well, the, the existing wording says it has separate kitchen, living and sleeping facilities within the primary dwelling or in the separate accessory building on the same lot as the primary dwelling.
So would plumbing and bathroom be considered living facilities?
Yeah, I think the, the kitchen and the living facilities would be including plumbing.
Okay, I, I'm just thinking of, you know, the, just sheds that people work out of that don't have plumbing or are, are really popular as well, kind of like an, an extra office sort of thing. So that would just be, that would not be an ADU, right? Even if someone sleeps there, it needs to essentially have plumbing.
It would be an accessory dwelling and, and you know, the thing is too, you can get into some fine distinctions and some of that involves a, a discussion with the building official also. What do they call it? How do their rules work? And then if we have to make a, an interpretation, we'll work with them to figure out what makes the most sense between the building code and, and the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
But I think that, you know, let's say you had a garden shed. And maybe even had plumbing there, a sink, you know, and you, you're planting your plants or a greenhouse or something like that and you know, or maybe you're a writer or something and you have a desk or something out there, but it's still not an ADU. It's just an accessory dwelling. It's not a full, it's not a place for full occupancy as a house, as a unit.
I, I think, I'm with Kate. I think that it would be appropriate to add some sort of bathroom facilities, because it would be easy to convert a she shed to to a rental. It really would be. I'm just wondering what the implications are of, you know, homeowners requesting licensing and permitting and, and all of that. If it's not, if it's not crystal clear.
Well, I think what I could do is where the sentence that is partly amended says it has a separate kitchen, living, bathroom, and sleeping facilities.
And that, that would only apply if it's detached though, right? Cause then we get into, if it's attached, it wouldn't necessarily would, would there have to be a separate bathroom, or could it be a shared bathroom?
Yeah, cause the key word would be independent.
Got it, okay.
Says independent.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be, oh, well, yeah, we've got this addition, but then those folks still come in and use the bathroom facilities, then it's not separate.
Right, got it.
Then you just have two families living in one house. Yeah, so I think the bathroom though, we could just use that to clarify, clarify. I think living was what was intended, but anyway, we could put bathroom as well. And I think that would probably take care of it. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, hi Keith, this is Lori. Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think, I mean, I can see where they're coming from here, but adding the word bathroom, it probably covers any question, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. And it clears everything up to make it so that it's pretty clear on what we're, what is needed to get an ADU.
Okay. Alright, then let's see, moving on.
Keith, what page are we on right now?
So we're on page fifteen of the PDF. So this would be getting into the the, the zoning district introduction and there's a table there that just has the different zoning districts listed. And we recently added the neighborhood mixed use zone and it didn't turn out to be reflected in this table, so it's listed there. So that's just a cleanup. Then on page seventeen. This is a, let's see, this is under sixteen dot eighty. These are just some general provisions for zoning again. And so we have a section here that says, it's a new one. And it says two things. One is we, we dropped the requirement for a garage for a dwelling unit. Again, this is just a, you know, related to affordability. And we're being encouraged definitely by the state and Metro to not require garages. As I have in my comment there, most of the time developers are gonna include one. But we wouldn't make it mandatory. You would have to have parking, at least for normal, not an ADU, but for other dwellings, you would have to have on-street parking for at least one automobile. But you wouldn't need to have a garage. And then the second, the next one, the new item C, this is an important one. So right now we have a number of developments that have homeowners associations, of course, and they have bylaws and some of those bylaws may wind up excluding ADUs or other types of units. And so what we're, what we've been told is that we can't undo the existing homeowners CCNRs, but for any new ones, we would have this provision that says that no homeowners association governing documents or deed restrictions shall be recorded to regulate housing types, including accessory dwelling units or impose any standards, including owner occupancy, which would have the effect of prohibiting or limiting the type of density of housing that would otherwise be allowable under the code. So that's, that text was put together by our city attorney, Peter Watts.
Keith, does that mean that HOAs that have these provisions currently indefinitely are, are kind of grandfathered in, or is there a ticking clock on that?
No, they're grandfathered in.
Okay, and what about as we grow and the city expands, if there are HOAs that have those in place before they become part of the city? Is it all, also status quo for them? They kind of keep doing what they're doing as they become part of the city?
If there are, most of what's out in our future growth area would not have any kind of homeowners association.
Okay.
The only one I could think of would be, oh gosh, why is the?
The river.
River, Rivermeat.
Yeah.
Rivermeat prob, may have some and those would be grandfathered in because they're pre-existing. But for the most part, we will be having new developments and then they would not be allowed to have these kinds of provisions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, going on to the R nine zone. Oh, so this is just a note for future. We're gonna be addressing some of these housing needs issues in sequence. So the accessory dwelling unit is one that we needed to get taken care of now. As we start with the master planning for our urban expansion area, we're going to be looking at how we comply with another housing requirement that's contained in House Bill two thousand and one. And that is about allowing in single-family zones that you also need to allow duplex, triplex and fourplex. So at least I'm thinking that what we'll want to do is revisit our housing standards to make sure that when we look at everything from single-family residential to multifamily and these, these different variations in between and ADUs, that we have a consistent approach to how they're designed, how we get them placed, all those sorts of things. And so I think we'll be coming back to this again to take a look at some other things. But at least right now, we would not. Cause we have a lot of questions on how do you get the scale for like a fourplex to fit well in a single-family detached neighborhood and how do you, how do you get these different dwelling unit types to play well together, design-wise and otherwise? And it's certainly possible to do, but you have to be fairly deliberate about it. Okay, so now I'm in the R nine zone. And on page nineteen of your PDF, I just have some changes here to deal with ADUs and also accessory buildings, just to make sure we're clear on what those are. Changed the reference, the uniform building code to the Oregon building code. And some comments about standards. So right now for accessory structures and detached accessory dwellings, I have a maximum height of eighteen feet for detached. If they're attached, they would be able to be as tall, you know, like in addition to an existing house, you could be as tall as what's allowed for the normal existing house. You know, get, looking at King City and the small size of lots and so forth, I think the one thing, and this is where looking at all different kinds of housing later in our master plan work and so forth, is gonna be important is to think about how this is all really going to work in, in the real world. So right now we have a, a height limit for detached accessory buildings, whether it's for just a structure or residence of eighteen feet, because we're just thinking if you put that in the rear yard and you already got a house that's, say, two stories tall, it's covering much of the lot. And then if you put in an accessory separate one, even if you can find the room and if you build that up to thirty-five feet, it's, it gets to be maybe a little overwhelming for that one lot. It's almost the McMansion problem on a little lot. the McMansion problem on a little lot with two buildings instead of one. So I think this is a place where we might certainly want to revisit some of our dimensional standards for ADUs, detached ADUs, along with the conversation about allowing duplexes, triplexes, and quads in single-family zones. So I'm proposing that we leave it at eighteen feet, which is what we've been doing so far, and we might want to revisit that later when we take a look at the bigger picture.
I agree with you. Keith, this is Carol Bellows. You know, I can't imagine in my own lot having an eighteen-foot ADU behind me, and then the next lot having an ADU behind them. Yeah, it could get really much more dense than we really intend. Thank you.
So we do, yeah, we do have lot coverage standards. We do have setback requirements and those sorts of things. So you know, frankly, we, I think I've mentioned this before, to my knowledge, nobody at the city has even been asked if they could do and have an ADU. And I think it's because so many of the lots, either in the original King City or in Edgewater and so forth, they're really just not very well suited. I mean, they're, they're small already. And they, the house that they have is just great, but there's really not much extra room for much of anything else. You know, about the, about the most I could see potential for is maybe some people, if they have a garage on an alley, they might want to put a second floor on perhaps, and, you know, have something above. But it's, it's really limited. So that's why we haven't even been asked about an ADU. So during the master plan, as I'm scrolling through here, we are going to have, and then we also got a grant from DLCD to do some more work on complying with House Bill two thousand and one. We're going to get some professional design help, so we could really figure out what makes sense for dimensions and heights and those sorts of things, so that buildings can fit in. Because otherwise, doing this kind of thing will help you a little bit, but you, it's so hard to visualize. So there are a lot of architects that have good tools to show how these things would work. And so we will want to be, become more sophisticated on this one.
Hey Keith.
Yes.
This is John Walter. I have a question. Hey, on these, on these ADUs, let's, let's assume that the existing homeowner wants to sell the ADU to a prospective buyer. I mean, how, how does property division work? If you're doing that?
Can't do it, John. You know, the only way they could do it would be if they had enough land to do a partition to meet the minimum lot size and setback requirements for both units.
Exactly.
How did, how did the laws governing condos affect this? Because, you know, it could be a condo back there, two condos on the same property.
Uh, don't condos require independent tax lots?
I don't know.
Yeah, boy.
Well, townhomes are on independent lots, right?
And I think, I think condos are too, and boy, my experience with condos is just about zero, so I'd have to look up and look that up, and we'd also have to talk with Peter, probably.
I know a lawyer who was trying to do that at one point.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think this would really, you know, if you could have a condominium, you wouldn't really have to have an accessory dwelling unit per se. You just have different units that are attached, either above or below or whatever, and you could sell them individually. So I, I think that whatever you might want to try to achieve with a smaller, separate unit, you could just simply achieve it through how you do the condominium.
So does the, this code specify we're not creating a second tax lot, or it, you know, it'd be built on the existing tax lot? That would kind of make it, no one could sell an ADU separate from their, their property?
No, no. I mean, it'd be the same as if you have a duplex or a triplex on one lot, you can't sell one of them individually to another person. You'd either have to form a condominium, or you'd have to partition it or subdivide it.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going through the single-family zone. I'm on page twenty-three. Really not much change, other than some references. One thing that we'll want to look at more comprehensively, this has to do with my note here about the twenty-foot height for buildings, is we, we don't have a very consistent approach from zone to zone on some things. This, this one's twenty feet, others are eighteen feet, others are thirty feet, others are thirty-five feet. And certainly sometimes you have a rhyme or a reason for why you have a different height in some zones and others. Obviously, higher density zones, you're going to tend to allow higher, taller units and so forth, but these are just kind of random. Why would you have eighteen in one zone and twenty in another? This is something I think we'll just want to go back and look at when we're looking at all of our residential zones together.
So Keith, did you actually apply my comment to these because of the varying heights in, between the different zones? And then having the ADU be subordinate to the main dwelling thereby, you know, if the height limit is twenty-five, we have a height restriction of eighteen. If it's thirty-five, it's twenty-five, forty-five is thirty-five, sort of thing.
I didn't have it graduated. It's, it's generally a detached is eighteen feet.
Um, I think it's really important when you're talking about the height of a building. Let's say a garage and then an ADU above it, that you've got at least eight feet in the garage, eight feet in the ADU, plus six inches between. So there you have sixteen and a half feet of just to the ceiling. And then you've got rafters and roof on top of that. So eighteen actually may be a little bit short for what you might be able to do with a roof line.
I, I agree with Commissioner Bellows there. I think eighteen's far too restrictive, especially if you're going to put an ADU on top of a garage.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
And, and that's what I was saying, Keith. That's why I think you need to have it graduated in each zone.
Okay.
Eighteen is fine in that SF zone where the height limit's twenty-five, you know? Can't do double-story, but if you're in other zones, the R nines, R sevens, or whatever, where you have a height limit of thirty-five, most people would probably put their ADU above the garage, which would make more sense in my book.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So I'm just trying to see what I have here. Okay. So what I'm hearing is that I should go back and change the height standards to make either an ADU, ADU over a garage feasible, and then maybe a little bit more height to allow for a single-story building with a reasonable peak to the roof.
Before a two-story.
Two-story ADU.
Garage, your garage is probably eight to ten feet from ground to ceiling. And then you added an ADU above the garage, you know, that's going to add another eight to ten feet. Plus you have your peak of your roof, which is going to be, you know, five to six feet there. So in, in my opinion, from my experience in development, is if you're going to put an ADU above a garage, it's going to be like twenty-five, twenty-six feet.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so Keith, this is Laurie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I'm wondering if maybe it needs to be two-line items, then. So there's the distinction between a, a ground-level unit, accessory unit, dwelling unit, and something that is above a garage. So then you can show the two different height things, rather than trying to lump both of those scenarios into one.
That makes sense.
Well, I would just say, like, if you're going to have a building height limit of thirty-five, then the ADU should not be able to exceed twenty-five feet. That seems pretty logical, and you would be able to do a garage with an ADU above that, or you'd be able to do a small ADU in your backyard and still be underneath the height limit, well underneath the height limit of the thirty-five.
Okay. I can make that change?
Have a, you could have like a little ADU with a loft and probably be, I, I would think right around what, eighteen to, you'd be, you'd be between eighteen to twenty feet, I would think, or eighteen to twenty-five feet, if you did like a small ADU with a loft. And it doesn't have to be very big, you know, I've seen it as very small.
Right. Not for another bedroom or something upstairs, or that's where the bedroom is or something?
You gotta think like the square footage of the footprint's going to be really small. So it may only be enough room for like a couple of seating areas and a small kitchenette with like a little bed up above. That would be my thought on a, on a small lot ADU. I mean, that's all you could think about. Otherwise, you have to put it above your garage. So I think either way you're looking at.
Well, then it sounds like either way, we're looking at twenty-five, twenty-eight feet, something like that.
I, I would keep it in line with whatever the height limit is for the zone. So if the high limit's, you know, thirty-five, then the height limit for the ADU is twenty-five. That way, it's, it's uniform. If the height limit's twenty-five, then the height limit for the ADU is, you know, eighteen, fifteen or eighteen, you know, eighteen probably.
Well, then I guess we would just have one standard, though. I think, based on what we're saying, I think we'd have one standard, because you could have either a detached ADU not on the ground, at ground level, with you know, a loft or something up above, gets them up to around twenty-five feet, or if they're on top of a garage, they're up to around twenty-five feet. So maybe it's just twenty-five feet?
Yeah, but you have that SF zone that has a maximum height of twenty-five. And so if we're going to make you subordinate to the primary, then it needs to be less height.
Okay. Um, Mike, I, this is Carol Bellows. I kind of disagree with that. I think it wouldn't be unfeasible to have, let's say, a two-story ADU, you know, kind of your loft idea, I like that, behind a single-story home.
Sure. Yeah, I could see that.
Could we, could we say it can't exceed the height of the primary dwelling?
Uh, well, you know, that, I guess that would be a given. So the way we've got it right now is if you do an addition to the house, you're subject to the height requirement of the primary dwelling, which might be thirty-five feet, might be twenty, twenty-five feet in some other zone. Frankly, in the SF zone, lots are so small, I can't imagine a detached ADU anywhere. Uh, you know, I think if anything, it would be a, an attached one somehow. But those lots are really small, even the rear yards are only like ten feet. So I don't even know if that would, would happen, but so I'll, I'll look at that, make sure that the detached ADU is, at least for the most part, is less than what the, the zone requires, but maybe still allow for a minimum of twenty-five feet regardless.
So we are tying the height of the ADU to the zone and not to the existing home. Is that correct?
That's, that's my suggestion, that we go, that we have it calibrated based off of the, what's the maximum height allowed for in the zone, and then have it less, say, like ten feet less. And this would be for detached, so then if you attach it, if it's just an more or less an addition to the house, but it's a separate unit, then it could be the same size as the, or the same height as the house, just like if you put an addition to the house just to make it bigger, not another unit, you'd say it's whatever the maximum height is. Okay, all right, we'll make that change. Let's see, okay, where was I? R nine. So let's see, where are we now? Okay, we're talking about the SF zone. So I guess in the SF zone, then an ADU would still be just a maximum height of twenty feet, because that's what it is for everything else. Does everybody agree with that?
I thought we agreed on twenty-five.
I know, but, and we still could do it, but right now, the code says in the SF zone that no building can be more than twenty.
All right.
Now, you know, I guess from a practical sense, SF zone is all developed. I don't even know if the KCCA has some requirements that coincide with this.
I thought the SF zone was twenty-five.
Uh, no, it says twenty.
Can you give me the section number you're on, Keith? Because I'm looking at it on the computer.
Okay, I am on page twenty-three of the PDF, and this is section sixteen dot eight eight dot oh four oh.
Thank you.
Subsection A six.
Got it.
Yeah.
Wow.
So at least in, in my report, that one is highlighted. And it's a twenty, it's a twenty-foot maximum for anything.
Right.
I think my house is bigger than that.
I think most are, even, even in single stories.
Yeah, twenty feet. Yeah, and our, our, our building height standard is to the peak of the roof. And a lot of jurisdictions will do the average. This one, ours is to the peak of the roof.
I think this needs to be changed. Because otherwise, you can't have like a tall ceiling in your front and your bottom, your first floor, like most of the homes in Edgewater have.
Yeah. So my recommendation would be that, like I said, we're going to be looking at design requirements in a much more detailed way with some folks that have more expertise than, than I certainly do on building design and what it takes and what they look like. I think that it'd be good to revisit this height requirement in the SF zone at that time. I I, I, I get concerned when we just start off the top of our heads, start coming up with a number, and then applying it in the, in the code. I'd like to look at it more holistically. So I guess for the SF zone in particular, we don't get any development applications there anyway, other than for converting a, a screened patio into an enclosed space. That's about the only kind of application we seem to ever get in the SF zone. Because for those of you who may not know, the SF zone is for the single-family residential stuff that's all in King City Civic Association. That's the only place it applies. It doesn't apply elsewhere. It doesn't apply to any, any properties that's undeveloped right now. So that's why I think I'd, I'd rather just leave it be for now. Maybe we come back and revisit it. That was why I even highlighted it. But I didn't, I, I didn't really want to start tinkering with it now. Doing code revisions is like a ball of yarn, you know, you keep pulling, and you wonder when it's going to end. So if that sounds good to everybody, maybe we'll just leave it at twenty feet, because that is what the standard's been for years, and we can, we can revisit that later. So I'll just say that if it's a detached ADU, it's maximum height's twenty feet in the zone. Okay. All right. So let's see, the apartment and townhouse zone. Other than just having some references to the accessory structure and ADU chapters, no other change really?
Um, excuse me, Keith? I, I remember going back to the KCCA. I had a question about, oh, we, somewhere in there, we crossed off could not be next to the golf oh, we, somewhere in there we crossed off could not be next to the golf course thing. Did they have something in their, their HOA that says that, that we don't have to say it in our code?
Uh, I, I assume they probably do. It sounded like an HOA kind of a requirement. It's not a typical zoning ordinance requirement.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah. Uh, now the attached R twelve zone, this is page twenty-five of the PDF. Similar changes and issues then to what we just discussed when the R nine. So I will, uh, allow for twenty-five feet for maximum height for detached ADU, whether it's over a garage or uh, or not. Uh, so I think that's probably all, because otherwise this, other than the density allowed being a little bit higher, the zone fundamentally works the same way as the, the R nine zone. Um, let's see.
I have a quick question. This is Kate Moore. Um, if there were new construction going on and someone wanted to, with new construction, include an ADU from the get-go, does that change the um, like the lot requirements and do the setbacks apply to the, where the ADU is placed?
It wouldn't change anything. It wouldn't change our requirements. Uh, from the standpoint of somebody building it, I'm sure it would be a little easier because you could think about both things together instead of plopping a house and then saying, oh, later, oh gee, I would like to do this now. I don't quite have enough room.
And do we have on here, I'm trying to um, wade through it, do we have something that indicates that there has to be a certain amount of space still in a yard or between the street with an, with the addition of an ADU?
Uh, yeah, let's see, where is it? Uh, so um, if you look on page twenty-nine of your PDF, uh, design requirements table, and so this is in uh, this is in the R twelve zone.
Okay.
Uh, you'll see required outdoor area.
Keith, what uh, number was that again?
It's page twenty-nine on the PDF.
We have a different paging system than you do. We have pages on the full packet.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay.
So just give us the chapter number Keith and we can.
Alright, sorry. It is sixteen dot ninety-four dot oh five oh.
Okay, got it.
And uh, the first page, uh, go by that one, go to the second page of that. And right up at the top, it's right above what's called figure one. You have a designer requirements table.
Right.
And anyway, uh, we have a minimum, minimum contiguous, contiguous rear yard uh, or side yard outdoor area of two hundred square feet. Uh, but you are exempted if you have a uh, garage. This would be for like the alley-loaded garages. And I expanded that exemption to accessory dwelling units as well. So what that means is, is if you have a detached garage, uh, and uh, it, it would be for, on an alley, you can put that in your rear yard and essentially have no rear yard or very little rear yard. And so with the idea of not discriminating against ADUs, but well, if you're gonna allow it for a garage, you should be able to allow it for an ADU as well. So you really wouldn't, but you still would have to meet the setback in height requirements. So I think from a practical standpoint, we're gonna, and goes back to why we've never been asked about an ADU. We really have such limited potential in our existing city for it. I think.
Do we have um, permeability sort of standards if, if, if that does happen? Do we have, um, I want to make sure that stormwater doesn't just start coming out to the street.
Oh, they would still have to meet uh, stormwater requirements, just like any other structure paved surfaces. So that would, that would be checked during the building permit.
Thank you.
On how they deal with stormwater and drainage off the roof and that sort of thing. Okay, now, uh, let's see, the next chapter is sixteen dot ninety-six. It's a multifamily residential zone, R fifteen. This is a zone that we have on the books. It's an old zone from whenever the code was adopted way back when. It does not apply to any property in the city right now. It's, it's just here in the code, but not out in the real world anywhere. Frankly, this code, this section needs to be reworked entirely if we want to have a zone like this one. So uh, I'm not really proposing any changes here for now because it doesn't apply anywhere. And uh, it, it's, if we keep it, it's in need of some major surgery. So I didn't really want to get involved in that one. Uh, going on to multifamily, chapter sixteen dot one hundred, the R twenty-four zone. Here again, um, I just have some notes. But I'm not really, uh, other than the references, I'm not really proposing any changes here. Uh, at the current time, also, we don't have any R twenty-four zoning that's developable. It's either developed or we don't have any. Let's see. Neighborhood mixed use. I talked about these before, just adding accessory dwellings as part of the mix. On sixteen dot one oh two oh four oh, dimensional and density requirements. There was a minimum average lot width requirement for single-family detached and somehow the sixty-foot standard didn't make it into the adopted version. I don't know. Some kind of typo, but anyway, I'm just putting that in there because that's what it's supposed to have been.
Oh, could I ask a question about the neighborhood mixed use zone? I, what I don't see reflected on there is a possibility for um, for a, a building where there are offices or businesses on a ground floor and rentable condos or apartments above. Is that on there? Is that something you guys have talked about or want to do? I know that that's becoming a little more popular in, in some areas.
It is allowed. We have a use called live-work units.
Okay, oh, I see. Live-work.
That's what it's supposed to be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in fact, I think live-working units could really work pretty well in that kind of a situation. That was really about all there. Uh, then going to parking and loading in sixteen dot one thirty-two. Just simply referring to our accessory chapter for parking, and then it says you don't have any parking requirement. I did it this way because we might work out some parking requirement in the future. There are a lot of uh, local governments that are not happy with the state's decision to actually prohibit us to have any parking under any circumstances. And we've tried to impress upon them that, well, if you're talking about areas that are more than a half mile from transit, and they're out in the suburbs, I mean, a, a dwelling unit's gonna come with a car. And then uh, what our concern was, is if we have a street that is less than twenty-eight feet wide, you can't have any on-street parking period. Well, where's it gonna go? Well, anyway, for right now, we can't require anything, but I'm hoping that maybe, because what we had proposed originally was that if your street was less than twenty-eight feet wide, you would have to provide one space for the ADU on your, on the property. Um, and we can't require that, but hopefully we can come back to that and that the, the state can get away from this one-size-fits-all and that not everything is, is a neighborhood off a division in southeast Portland. So let's see, moving on. Uh, calculation and uh, circulation and access sixteen dot one thirty-six. We just have standards for driveway widths and so forth, based on number of units and consistent with the theme of an ADU does not count as a for density and so forth. Also, doesn't change the access requirements. Um, then chapter once, sixteen one forty-six. It's uh, let's see.
This is my, um, my interested one.
Oh, yeah.
Carol Bellows, yeah.
Right. So this is the, you know, so I put this note down that this is something we need to discuss later. Because it, it needs a more full discussion on how do we want to calculate density and how do we want to deal with remnant parcels that are left and that sort of thing? How do you count those? But I, I, so I do have some notations in here that, uh, you know, just to kind of keep in mind for later. Right now, the only thing that we're changing is uh, the fact that an accessory, an accessory dwelling unit does not count towards the density calculation. But yeah, we got the bigger question that we have to noodle on later. Um, then I get to accessory structures. And um, I'm just making some, proposing some changes here so that our requirements for accessory structures and accessory dwelling units, when they're separate, are similar and make sense together. I was finding that uh, we did have some requirements that seemed to be a little bit uh, so I clarified. So I clarified some language in here, starting on sixteen one seventy-six oh two oh. Uh, from recommendations from Clark Company. Just to clarify what an accessory structure is and what uh, what is exempt. Uh, we had a submission requirement that required a pre-application meeting to put in an accessory structure. Since you don't have to do that for a house, I thought, well, why do you need a pre-application meeting for this? Uh, so it pulled that out. So with the dimensional standard, based on what I'm hearing, we've got eighteen feet right now for accessory structures. Uh, we could leave those at eighteen feet if it's not going to be for a dwelling. Or we could increase them to twenty-five based on our discussion we've had before. I don't know what you folks have any strong feelings about that.
Hey Keith, uh, this is John Walter. It, it's prob, it's kind of interesting to me, excuse me, it's kind of interesting to me. I, I view it as a quality of life issue or quality of, yeah, quality of life issue. And uh, this, this whole thing about, this whole thing about not requiring a garage and not requiring a driveway or a parking spot on, onsite for these cars uh, that are gonna be, you know, using the, the auxiliary building. I, it just really, you know, all of us probably sitting at this table today, we probably all have two-car garages. We probably all have um, you know, the, the streets aren't necessarily packed with cars all the time because everybody's got a place to park and it just seems like to me that um, well, I'm just gonna leave it as a quality, a, a quality issue in, in, in housing tracks. But the, then, the next thing I wanted to call, talk about is the density issue. And so during the, during the Ponderosa Pines uh, discussion, uh, I thought somebody suggested that there was uh, kind of a density calculation for that particular neighborhood. And if a lot of residents were to add ADUs uh, and we're not counting them as density, doesn't that cause some problems further down the line in terms of uh, you know, emergency evacuations and stuff like that? I mean, there, the density calculation is so that people can get around safely. And yet we're not counting these ADUs as density.
Right. Uh, well, um, at least for now, that's what we're told we have to do. Um, so we really don't have a choice in the matter. I think from a practical standpoint though, it's not that you're gonna have, every house is gonna have an ADU. They're gonna be scattered. Uh, and so I think it's probably likely that they're not gonna be consequential. I think the other thing too is the higher the density of the neighborhood already, the less likely you're gonna get an ADU because where are you gonna put it? I mean, physically, you just aren't gonna have room to put it anywhere. So for example, Ponderosa Pines, there's, unless they can convert it and somehow create an ADU within the existing dwelling that they can fit on there, they're not gonna have any room physically to put it anyplace. I mean, those are gonna, those lots are gonna have enough room for a two-story building and that's really it. So, you know, ADUs are, are really mostly intended for areas where people do have enough of a yard uh, that they have a room to either put on in addition to their house, or they have a large house and maybe they can convert their basement to an ADU. Or they're upstairs to an ADU and make it separate with another entrance or something. But um, you know, the potential is probably fairly low, but I, I understand what you're saying. And I, and on the parking thing, we just kind of shook our heads and a number of planners from, you know, Beaverton and other places do the same thing. It's just like, that's not making much sense. Now, I think from a practical standpoint though, you're going to have these units with some kind of parking. Because people are gonna want to have a functional place to live and if, if uh, they don't at least have a driveway or someplace to park their car uh, with the ADU, uh, and they don't, they can't park it on the street and they gotta go park it three blocks away. That's not gonna be a very popular solution even for the people living there. So I think it'll self-select to a certain extent. We won't, that won't come to be that big a problem, but I, I, I hear you.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see. Okay, then getting to accessory dwelling units on sixteen one seventy-eight. I have uh, first of all, made it clear that an ADU is reviewed administratively. Uh, so that would be the same as getting a building permit for a single-family house or anything else. It's no, no special review, uh, no pre-application meeting. And then also change some of the submission requirements to be essentially what you have to submit for a building permit for a house. Because you don't need a, you know, an elaborate site plan and all this kind of stuff. I mean, you can just pretty much just give us what you would give us if you were just building a house on that lot. And then I just clarified that we're not talking about a structure. We're talking about an accessory dwelling unit. There was some verbiage there that wasn't quite clear. And then for the approval standards, we had some, we had some design requirements there about the ADU needing to match the look of the uh, primary dwelling. And uh, those have been dropped. Uh, because we don't really have mu, we don't really have any design requirements for the primary dwelling, other than some of the front facade standards that maybe some of you have noticed for the doors and front windows and stuff that you need to meet. Uh, but we don't have any for uh, single-family homes, so we really needed to pull those out here. Uh, and then just before we get into signs, you'll see that I have now no additional off-street parking is required for an accessory dwelling unit. So like I said, we might see some changes there later, but at least that's, that's the state tells us that's what we gotta do. And then last, uh, signs. I just went directly to the one place where we talk about process in the sign code and just made the, the changes there. Deleted the requirement for planning commission review and just made it pretty simple that, you know, if you meet the sign code, it goes through the city manager's administrative decision and if it needs a very- And if it needs a variance, it goes through the planning commission. So that's it.
Hey, I had just one comment on your sign thing. So, um, on Pacific Highway, as you're heading towards the I five, there's a new sign. It looks like a television screen, one of those type of signs. And I was, uh, driving up the road the other day and all of a sudden the sign, and this is from a distance, but the sign turned into blue and red. The exact blue and red that emergency vehicles have. And two or three cars got all startled, the brakes, there was kind of rapid braking and then they saw that it really wasn't a, an emergency vehicle. So it's kind of like, I was wondering if in the sign code, we could prevent these televised signs, kind of like the big TV sign, uh, from, uh, displaying a emergency vehicle, blue and an emergency vehicle red. And this, uh, this one.
Is this one in Tiger?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of near, it's kind of near where the harbor freight tools is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we have, let me just check. I think we have a provision in our sign code that, uh, prevents you from putting up some signs or lights that could be confused in that way. But, uh, just bear with me here. Okay, we have, we have a couple of things. We have, uh, you can't have a flashing sign. You can't have a sign that resemble resembling official traffic signs or signals. So I think we probably have the, the leverage to prevent something like that now. There would be some interpretation. Uh, it's, uh, the sign code, as I've mentioned before, needs a complete overhaul anyway. But I think we probably have something that we could interpret to deal with that right now.
Okay.
Because I would agree, that's not good. You don't want things flashing like that. People get it out of the corner of their eye and think it's a emergency vehicle or something. Yeah. So, um, from here, I guess the next step is, uh, you, the planning commission, you could either recommend, uh, sending this off, uh, to the city council with the change that we would have a maximum height for accessory structures, accessory dwelling units of twenty-five feet. And that we would also include, uh, the clarification that an ADU would also include bathroom facilities and plumbing. But I think those are the only two things I believe that, you wanted to see change here. And so I guess it would also be up to you if you wanted to see those changes before you sent your recommendation forward. We could do that. Or, now, Ronnie, we do have a city council meeting scheduled, but of course I could be bumped, I suppose, if they wanted to do.
It's, it's, it's during the regen, uh, writ, regular business meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
So before we go any further, though, uh, on the recommendation, there, this is part of a public hearing, so there is a little process. Commissioner Petrie, can you ask those questions that?
And you're going to put me on the spot here. So, so basically, what I think what you're saying is that at this point in time, uh, we are asking if there is any public comment concerning this proposal. Also, Ronnie, were there any more public comment received by you other than the one you mentioned from Fair Housing?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, so I can't see if there's any, uh, any, any other folks dialed into this meeting that, uh, might have, might want to indicate that they have some testimony on this fact. Do you have any?
Yes, I do. Let me, let me go ahead and unmute a few folks and we'll go ahead and, um, I'll start with Ezra Hammer from HBA. Um, I'm gonna unmute him.
Good morning, uh, planning commissioners. This is Ezra Hammer with the Home Builders Association Metropolitan Portland. Thank you for taking up this issue of accessory dwelling units today and thanks staff for your diligent work on some of these code revisions and highlighting some areas for future conversation. I just want to highlight that getting your accessory dwelling unit ordinance in order is going to be a vital asset to the city as you move forward with concept planning and eventually comprehensive planning for your new expansion area. Obviously, um, as staff has eloquently highlighted, there are limited opportunities for accessory dwelling units within the built environment due to existing CCNRs. However, um, future development won't have those same restrictions. And so getting these rules right so that ADUs can be an option will be extremely valuable. I want to highlight, um, some of those values around ADUs. Study by the state identified the fact that over fifteen percent of ADUs are actually rented for free. Uh, and this is because they are overwhelmingly given to family members, um, as free housing. And so this is really kind of a, a creative tool where a city can, um, encourage the development of affordable housing without having to put the, um, significant dollars in place to actually build what would otherwise be affordable housing. So, that's a fantastic tool. This is really also a, a great tool to support intergenerational living. We see many situations where, um, an existing older couple who needs a little bit less home will decide to move into the ADU. And their, their, um, their children with younger children possibly themselves will move into the house. Uh, and kind of share a responsibility, um, and ownership of the, of the house and ADU. So we think that this is a really fantastic tool and AARP has some, has done some great work highlighting the value of ADUs to support older Americans as they, um, transition to their golden years. So, thank you again for taking this up. Again, this is something that, um, when you get right, will be a real asset to the city in the coming years and decades. And we strongly support the recommendations that staff has made and, uh, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Um, Ronnie, are, is there another? Ronnie, are there any other?
Ronnie, you're on mute. Ronnie, you're on mute.
Sorry. All right. I have Gary Woods and Daryl Smith. I had, nope, there is Daryl Smith on the line. Do you guys have anything to say on the ADUs?
Guys, Daryl Smith, I've got nothing to add and appreciate you guys' time and, and the comments that have been made. I think this is going to be a good benefit. Thanks.
Thank you, Daryl. Uh, Gary Woods, do you have anything to say?
I just am wanting to, uh, start learning about what's going on, so I don't have anything to add. I'm just listening and, uh, learning. So I want to find out what's happening with the planning commission of our city.
Okay, sounds great. All right. Do I have any other comments? Going once? Going twice? Lori Petrie, you have the floor.
All right, so, uh, planning commission members, uh, is there any further discussion that you would like to have concerning these proposed amendments? Okay.
Okay, I, um, um, in addition to what we have here, and I don't know whether, I'm not sure when this is going to happen. Um, I think it's very important to talk about tree removal. You know, because we've seen all these trees come down and if you're going to build an ADU in your yard, you may be removing trees. Right now, I noticed that the, um, city manager has discretion. But I've worked for jurisdictions that, um, say that if you remove one tree, you have to plant another tree somewhere else or, um, some of, um, another way of dealing with it is, um, pay into a kind of tree, um, tree fund to, for the neighborhoods. Um, trees are really, really important. Um, they're not, um, they're mandatory. They're, they're not optional to our way of life, to our climate, to, um, to who we are as, as human beings. So I really do want to, if not, um, I want to just stake my time now to say that we really need to look at the removal of trees within the ADU development code.
So Mike, want to chime in on that?
Yeah, so, um, Ronnie and I have been working on, uh, modification to our tree ordinance and the fees associated with it. Um, because we don't have, uh, the heritage markers to go around and put on the trees themselves. We need to get on it. So what we've done is we've identified a series of different trees, whether it's a landscape tree, a street tree, or a heritage tree, a tree that was originally designed as part of the subdivision or planning commission, approval. And those trees require planning commission authorization for removal. We don't like the way that the tree ordinance is written right now either. Uh, it makes it really gray and murky. There's all these like stipulations for removal. Like if you want to remove a tree, you have to prove that it qualifies as one of these like two or three nuisances. And that only allows, uh, break in a water line or infiltration into a sewer line or, uh, some other major infrastructure thing. So, um, what we would like to do is add some clarity on there. So it's not as murky and it's, uh, clearly defined on what steps people have to do if they want to remove a tree. I also agree with Commissioner Bellows, if they are going to remove a tree, they should be replacing it. But what I don't want to see is people removing trees because they don't like the little seed pod it drops. Or they don't like it because it's a fir tree. There are things like, it could be like a two-hundred-year-old fir tree and they're just like, oh, I hate it. So I want to get rid of it. And I want to plant a small three-foot, uh, Japanese maple. And I'm just like, that doesn't, that, that doesn't, uh, meet my definition of a replacement tree. So I want to make sure that there's some clarity in that tree ordinance and make sure that it satisfies. But that is a whole nother section. And, you know, that's something that Ronnie and I have been working on and we're going to pull Keith in as well. We've been trying to push it off and add it to the master planning piece, but, um, I think it's rising up to a point where we're going to have to address it before we get there.
I'd like to add also, uh, as far as the code generally, we have started doing a code audit and really just taking a look at parts of the code that aren't working well for one reason or another, or that we at least need to look at and talk about. And I've mentioned already, uh, dealing with the different types of housing that we'll be allowing in single-family residential zones and how to deal with those. So if you planning commissioners have any, notice any pieces of the code or parts that you don't think are working well, or that you'd like to take a closer look at, please, uh, pass that on. And we can add it to the audit. So the tree removal would be one example. Yeah, thank you.
All right. So Lori Petrie, there's a couple of questions for the commissioners that, uh, need to be asked for the public hearing. Would you like me to ask those? Or would you like to carry on with the floor on that?
I don't have those questions, Ronnie. So if you could do that, that would be great.
Do any commissioner, uh, do any members of the planning commission wish to abstain?
No.
Do any of the members of the planning commission wish to report significant ex parte contact? Uh, if.
No.
Does any of the, um, members of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the planning commission of this, uh, to this hearing? That might help if I unmute everybody. All right, I'm going to ask that question again. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the planning commission to, uh, hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the planning commission? All right, Lori Petrie, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I found my question. Thanks, Ronnie. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to, uh, close or continue this public hearing. Is there a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion. I, I move that we close this public hearing at this time. Is there a second?
For clarification purposes, we're recording. That was, I got a second from Commissioner Bellows.
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, um, we've had a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Let's go to the vote. It says we can have a voice vote, but it's kind of, I can't see everyone, so, um.
Do a roll call.
Yeah, let's do a roll call. Thanks, Ronnie.
Let me get to my cheat sheet here. Commissioner Bellows?
Um, can you clarify what we're voting on?
Closing the meeting, or I'm sorry, closing the public hearing.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mel Manelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Missing is Commissioner Paulson, Commissioner Reynolds. All right, floor is yours.
Okay, so we have a positive vote, uh, motion passes. You might want to mute me in a minute here. I declare this public hearing closed at eleven oh one.
Love your clocks, Lori.
I know, sorry, guys. I can't mute myself. And it's going to be about eleven, so it's about to go off. So I'll say this quickly. So the next thing is, what is the pleasure of the cl- planning commission at this time? Do we wish to, uh, recommend or not recommend the, uh, proposed amendments to the code as, uh, presented by staff? With the changes, and I make sure I get all these, Keith, that we're talking about, uh, changing a maximum height to twenty-five. We're adding language in the ADU description to include a bathroom. There was one other one and I can't, I didn't write it down, so.
Well, I think one other was a change to the findings, uh, goaltend. As, as.
Okay, so, so with that information, with the proposed amendments, with these, uh, these additional changes that we agreed should go forward, do we, do I have, uh,
A motion?
What, are we ready to go forward with this, uh, commission or would, is there more discussion that you would like to have?
I move that we present the, um, findings to the city council that include the, um, addendums that we talked about, the bathroom. What else?
So you're making, you're moving, you're, you're presenting a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, so you have, um, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
All seconded.
All right. So what I, for color, clarification, I have, uh, John seconded?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Is there any further discussion on putting forward this recommendation?
Um, I would like to, um, uh, one of the things I want to specify in the motion is that we, um, have decided to put discussion about chapter sixteen point one four six be number two and three to a later date. That is the discussion regarding, um, the density calculations that came into question when we did ponderosa pines.
Um, we already have a motion and a second. Um, we already have a motion and a second. The, that would be up to, and was it you that presented the motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so you're wanting to amend your motion to uh, do, do, I'm, I'm just, just a suggestion here, but there are several other things that are going to be going up for further discussion. At this point, we are just talking about mainly changing the language to include references to accessory dwelling. Uh. But he, did you really want to include that in this particular recommendation?
I really want to make sure that it isn't just um, assumed that it is um. Accepted as it is written. Since it came.
No, I think, I think staff was pretty much saying that there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to have to be addressing at a later date. But at this point today, I think really the recommendation is just about adding this language to cover. Uh, just basically that we do want to have a reference to accessory dwelling units. In our code and there's going to be a lot more conversation that we're going to have to have later. So I don't think anything's going to be swept away. Um, are you okay with just going forward with your original motion?
Um, yes, in that case I am.
Okay, great. I, I appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to recommend. To the uh, council these amendments, um, in addition to the changes stated. So I, if there's no further discussion, let's go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bellows?
Yes.
Commissioner Manelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Missing Commissioner Als- Paulson and Reynolds. Um, floor is yours.
I didn't, I didn't, I heard no um, no mo- opposed votes, so the motion passes. So, let's see, do I need to read this other one? If you desire to appeal though, so the, now, the, the motion passes, uh, where we're making this recommendation to the council. If you desire to appeal this decision to city council, you must make an application stating the grounds for your appeal to the city.
Excuse me, this is Keith. This is just a recommendation, so there's nothing to appeal.
So anyway, so ignoring that particular note. So, okay, so the motion uh, passes. Uh, the next thing on our agenda would be if any of the commissioners have any uh, report they would like to make. I am not hearing any uh, requests for an additional report. So if there is no further business, I think we could move to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
That would be Mike. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
That would be John. Okay, so I moved in second that we adjourn this meeting at eleven oh eight. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Uh, for clarifications, uh, that was Commissioner Manelis and Commissioner Walter seconded.
That's correct. Okay, so I hear no discussion. Let's move to a vote. And I guess we'll have to do another roll call vote because I can't see anybody.
Yeah, let's do. Roll call, though. Uh, Commissioner Bellows?
Yes.
Commissioner Manelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
That sounds like a majority.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care of it.